Father, thank you for this beautiful day. Thank you that we've been able to sit in gardens and enjoy the sunshine. Thank you, Lord, for being with us throughout it all. Thank you that you never leave us nor forsake us. You are here constantly with us, indwelling by your Holy Spirit. Thank you, Father, that this is part of your plan. That's everything that's happening in and around the world and everything that's happening in our lives is part of your plan. And for us, we can know, because we are your children, because we are believers in the Lord Jesus, we can know that you will cause all things to work together for our good because we love you and we're called according to your purpose. And that's an absolutely amazing promise, Lord. And I thank you for it, that we can know, no matter what, you will cause everything in our life to work together for good. And that one day, when we see you face to face, we will know all that you have done. We will be able to see the tremendous tapestry of our life and how every thread has been woven together with the other and how glorious it will be, Lord, when we see you. And I thank you so much. I thank you that though we don't know what we'll be like, we know we'll be like you. And though we don't know exactly even how you are now, Lord, we know that you are glorious and that you are beautiful and that you are majestic and wonderful. And so we just long to see your face, Lord. And so I thank you, Father, that while until we get there, you are giving us all of this knowledge, Lord, all of this wonderful information about how we live with you during these times, Lord, how we live with you in days that are easy and how we live with you in days that are hard and how we can know, whichever it is, you are right there, holding our hand and helping us through. So I want to pray for everyone who's here, Lord, and all those people who will be coming in, hopefully, as we start the session. I pray that they would all hear from you, that we would all hear from you, myself included, Lord, tonight. And that as we hear, we would be changed by just the hearing of your word and the knowing of what you have for us. And I thank you, Lord, and I pray all of that in the name of the Lord Jesus. Amen. So hopefully, with the homework and with the past few weeks that we've been going through, how to study, you will have got the idea of reading over and over and over again. I think that that is the basis of all Bible studies, just to keep reading and reading and reading. You know, in education, when they are teaching educators what to do and how to formulate a lesson, very often what they'll be telling teachers and other people who educate, they will be telling them about the fact that some people learn better by listening, some people by reading, some people by seeing things on a board, some people like interaction, some people like silence. There are all different types of people and our minds and our brains are all different. And so we receive information in a different way and we formulate our thinking in a different way from one another. And so one of the things about reading over and over and over again and looking at, asking questions of the text and marking words and maybe doing that in colour, which is what I like to do, is that that's hitting every part of my brain. I don't know actually which way I learn better. I think I learned better by reading. But I know that also what educators are told is that if you read a thing over once, if you read, for example, a chapter of scripture once, you will remember something like 5% to 10% of what it says. Every time you read it again, you will remember huge amounts more. So that the more you read, the more you'll remember. And that really seems to me an amazing incentive to keep reading the same chapters over and over again, to keep going back over them and asking questions, marking answers, making lists. And that's, I hope, what you've been finding, actually, that you're remembering what these chapters in Ephesians actually say and you're being able to spot different words that are used often. And you are making lists of the words that you mark and you're being able to formulate an understanding of things that Paul told you about himself, things that he told you about the Ephesians that he was writing to, things that he told you about God and about the Lord Jesus Christ and about the church. And all of those things are information that God wants you and I to have about the things that he wants us to learn about. Because knowing God is eternal life. That's what we, in the very first session, from John 17:3, "And this is eternal life, that they might know you, the one true God, and Jesus Christ, whom you have sent." This is Jesus himself speaking as he begins to pray for his disciples and then for those who will believe in him through the words that those disciples preach. So as I say, all of that, hopefully, you've been doing and understanding and you've been able to maybe work out a couple of themes or a couple of ideas that you see that are running through these chapters in Ephesians that we've seen. And you've been maybe able to see and to understand and interpret what you read in context. You know, where are these people when Paul is writing to them? Well, they're in a place called Ephesus. And this letter was written, you know, just after, no more than 30 years after Jesus' death and resurrection. So this is a long time ago, 2,000 and something years ago. And maybe you've looked up the word Ephesus in a concordance or in historical books or even in commentaries and you've seen what Ephesus was like. What was it like in that city where this new church had been formed? What was it like there? And what were they facing as believers in Christ? And where have they come from and who were they? And all of these questions are helping you to see the context in which this letter is written and received and the information that God wanted these new believers to have about him and about themselves. And so one of the things that I don't know if I've said, but I know that I've just said it also, that to mark words that are repeated. And those words are very often key words in whatever it is you're studying. And a key word is a word that if you take it out of a sentence or a paragraph or a chapter, then the sentence and the paragraph will have no meaning. So if you're noticing that a word is repeated and then you try to take it out of the sentence or the paragraph that you find it in, you'll find that you actually can't make any sense of what you're reading. That means that that word is a key word and that it is important, I would say imperative, that you understand fully what that word means. So one of the words that you will have noticed, if you did the homework, if you read through Ephesians 2 and Ephesians 3, one of the words that you will notice that is a key word in those chapters is the word mystery. And if you take the word mystery out of the paragraph that you find it in or the several paragraphs that you find it in, then the whole structure of that writing has no meaning and you are unable to understand what it means. And therefore, you will be unable to understand how to apply it to your life. So that's one of the things to begin with, that key words are important. And so to notice them and to mark them and to make sure you understand what their definition was at the time of writing. All of that to say, you probably need a concordance, either in your house, in a book form or online. There's many of them. You can go online and have a look. You need to be able to find where a word... And we've lost you. Oh, no, there you are. You're back again. We momentarily lost you. And now you're muted. Thank you. I don't know what happens. But yeah, it just suddenly stops and I know that I'm out of the meeting. So I don't know whether that's my laptop or what it is, but anyway. So what I was saying is the concordance, look up the words, find out what they mean in their original language. What do they mean? Because mystery in our, for example, mystery has a totally different meaning than it had in the Old Testament and the New. And so we really need to understand what those words mean. So we've spoken also a little bit of cross-referencing in your Bibles. If you've got a big enough Bible, almost certainly you'll have a sidebar and it will have cross-references to some of the verses that you're reading. It's really important to look up those cross-references. You may look up some of them. Sometimes I look up a cross-reference and I think, I don't even know how that has been cross-referenced. But it's important to know where different thoughts, different words are used in other parts of scripture. And that's just to help to show you where they are. Sometimes in this type of study, you can get bogged down with the details. You know, you can be making endless lists, marking words that are repeated. And especially if you choose to mark the word God or Christ or him or he, you can find the whole page is completely marked all over the place. So don't get bogged down in the details when you're doing these studies. But the details are important. So as you go through and as you start to do this more and more, you'll find that there are certain things that you know, okay, I'm going to come back to that at the last and I'm going to make a list of, for example, what I learned about God. And I'm going to do that last because I know there's so much here that I could learn. I'm not going to be trying, doing too much to try and think about it now. So yeah, so all of these things, this is how you're going to approach every book of the Bible. I think I said last week that studying the Bible book by book is by far the best way. Because you really do get an understanding of the theme and the idea in the book and you're not trying to understand what God is saying from just a couple of chapters or a couple of verses often. So one of the things I want to look at in this session, this is session three of How to Study, and we've got one more after this. One of the things I want to look at is purpose. What is the reason that the person wrote this letter? For example, Ephesians. What's the reason that certain books were written down in scripture? What is the purpose? What's the purpose of the writing? Ultimately, God wrote it all. So what did he want us to know from the different books of the Bible? And mostly, mostly in the New Testament particularly, you can work out or you can find out what the purpose is, why God asked or inspired these people to write down these things, particularly the letters. You can see the purpose if you look for certain words. And I think in the homework, I said some of those words, "therefore". The word "therefore" is a dead giveaway, that that's going to tell you some reason why either the preceding verses were written or the whole book was written. What is the "therefore"? "Therefore", that's the thing. So every time you see the word "therefore", I underline it in scripture because I know that's going to tell me a reason or a purpose for something that I've just read or even something that I'm actually going to go on to read. So you've got the word "therefore", you've got the phrase "for this reason", that's another one. It's almost the same as "therefore", but "for this reason". And then another phrase like "so that", "so that". And again, all of these are kind of connecting ideas. They're taking usually what the author has just written and they're connecting it to what he is going to write next. And so if we're trying to understand what God wants to tell us from particularly the letters in the New Testament, let's say, we need to be really careful to watch those words so that we can make that connection. So that when we have, Ephesians is a wonderful letter to do this because you have the first three chapters of Ephesians, which lay out all the wonder of who we are in Christ and what God has done for us. And then at the beginning of chapter four, Paul will write, "Therefore, I, the prisoner of the Lord, implore you to walk in a manner worthy of the calling with which you have been called." So you know that "therefore", the "therefore" is there because of all that he has just said. Now, it's not that he hasn't used that word before. He has, and that has had intermediary meanings. But here, you know that he is going to start a completely different idea. He spent the first three chapters telling you what God has done for you, what he has done to bring you into the place that you now are spiritually. And then he's going to spend the next three chapters, four, five and six, telling you now what you do because of what God has done. And you know, it's so easy to see this. So if you just, for example, mark every time that you see the word or the phrase "for this reason", "so that", "therefore", if you mark that word, you will almost never miss the point of what the writer, what God wants you to do because of what you have just learned. So we're going to look at a little bit of that because in the homework, I asked you to do Ephesians, read Ephesians 2 and 3 and to answer some questions about it. And so we're going to go just back for a minute or two to Ephesians, chapter 1. And when you get down to verse 15, you have one of these phrases, "for this reason". And so, you know, if you're asking questions as you go down the chapters, you will have read all the way down to verse 14 and have understood that you, as a believer, have been given a pledge of your inheritance in Christ and that is the Holy Spirit who now indwells you. And then in verse 15, Paul is going to slightly change the subject and he's going to say, "For this reason, I too, having heard of the faith in the Lord Jesus, which exists among you and your love for all the saints, do not cease giving thanks for you while making mention of you in my prayers." So he's going to tell them, "Because I've heard of your faith in the Lord and which exists among you and the love that you have for all the saints, I have been praying for you, and this is what I've been praying, that the God of our Lord Jesus Christ, the Father of glory, may give to you a spirit of wisdom and of revelation in the knowledge of him. I pray that the eyes of your heart may be enlightened so that you will know what is the hope of his calling, what are the riches of the glory of his inheritance in the saints and what is the surpassing greatness of his power towards us who believe." So that's Paul's prayer for them, his prayer for those believers. And he's praying it, I think I've said that before, because he knows that they have this faith and he knows that they love the saints, they love one another and they have come into the family of God. And so he's praying, he's praying because he wants God to give them the wisdom that they need to be able to take up all of the knowledge. He's just said, remember, he said, "For this reason, I'm praying for you. Because of all of that I've just said of who you are and what God has done for you, I want you to understand the fullness of what it is, who it is that you are and what it is that God has done. And so I'm praying for you." And verse 17, he says, "He wants God to give them wisdom and revelation in the knowledge of him." And now, I know that I've talked about this word "knowledge" before, but if you looked up this word in a Greek dictionary, you would find that this particular word "knowledge" actually means clear and exact knowledge that has an influence on the life of the one knowing. I mean, that's just, you know, this isn't just that you know a fact. Paul's prayer is that you have wisdom and revelation in the knowledge of God and that knowledge is going to have an effect on the way you live your life. So straight away, at the beginning of his prayer, what Paul lays out for them is another truth, actually. It's another fact about their faith and who they are in Jesus. And that is, if you know that God has done all of this for you, to you, in you, then that knowledge will change the way that you live. And so Paul's praying that the knowledge of it will grow in them, that they will have wisdom and a revelation in the knowledge of God because he wants them to trust what he's told them in their innermost being. He wants them to trust that what he's just written to them is what God has given him to tell them. And actually, you know, this is true for you and I. What we have read in Ephesians, chapter 1, verse 1 to verse 14, is true of every single person who heard the gospel, believed it and received the Holy Spirit. That's you and me. If you received the Holy Spirit of God, given to every single person who believes the gospel, and remember, we talked about believing. Believing is not just knowing some truth in your head. It's actually surrendering to that truth, entrusting yourself to that truth, in this case, Jesus. So faith, believing, is knowing the truth about Jesus, entrusting yourself to that truth, surrendering to that truth. And if you have done that, the Lord has given you his spirit. And now he wants you to know the fullness of what that means. And so much so, that he didn't just write the facts of it, but he actually got Paul to write a prayer to let you know what's going to happen when you know this. When you know these facts from verse 1 to verse 14, your life will change. You will live differently. You will live differently. So many things we could take from that, you know. But there's not really the time here. I mean, we can ask ourselves the questions, really. What's the application for me just from that first sentence in his prayer? The application for me is, is my life changing? You know, am I changing? Have I received all of this knowledge? Have I actually trusted this knowledge that Paul has given me, that God has given me through Paul? Have I actually surrendered to this knowledge? Do I know that God's grace has been lavished on me? Do I know that I am blessed with every spiritual blessing in the heavenly places? And if I do, has that changed the way that I view my life? Has it changed the way that I live my life? Has it changed the way that I think about myself? The way I think about other believers? Has it changed the way that I think about God? You know, all of these questions are important because this is a living word. We said this right at the beginning. "The word of God is living and active and sharper than any two-edged sword and able to separate spirit and soul, bone and marrow, and to judge the thoughts and the intentions of the heart." That's Hebrews 4, verse 16. Then the word of God is alive and its purpose is that you will know about God and know about yourself. And in that knowing, trust the truth of it. So much so, that you literally surrender your life, yourself, your whole being, to the one who is telling you these facts about you. So Paul prays that God would give them wisdom and revelation in the knowledge of him. And he prays that the eyes of their heart will be enlightened. You know, we read this word "heart" in the New Testament quite a lot. And actually, we can often think about that in terms of our heart and loving and our emotions. But actually, the word "heart" in the New Testament almost always is actually the word "will", the center of your being. So it's not your emotions, it's the center of your being. It's the place that decides what you're going to do and when you're going to do it. It's not your mind. Your mind is a brain that takes in information. It's just a computer that takes in information. Your heart, the heart that we talk about and where your emotions come from, that's another thing. But your will is why you do what you do. It's how you decide what you're going to do. Because, think about it, information comes into your mind, facts come into your mind, ideas, thoughts come into your mind. But you still have to choose what you are going to do with or about those things that you have heard. And if you hear truth and choose not to believe it, that choice is made in your will. So that's what Paul means here, that the eyes of your will will be enlightened, the eyes of the center of your being will be enlightened so that you will know. So that you will know, he says. "I pray that the eyes of your heart may be enlightened so that you will know." And then he's going to list certain things. And this word "know" is not the same as the word "knowledge" that he's already used in verse 17. This is a slightly different word. And this word "know" means experience. So he wanted you to have wisdom and revelation in the knowledge of God. And that word meant knowledge that will change the life of the person who does the knowing. And now he's saying, "I want your will to be enlightened so that you will experience, experience the hope of his calling, the riches of the glory of his inheritance in the saints and what is the surpassing greatness of his power towards us who believe." Paul wants, God wants, you to experience these things. The hope of your calling. What is the hope of your calling? A hope here in scripture, if you look up the word "hope", it doesn't mean, you know, a wish list like you have at Christmas or like your kids have at Christmas. It's not, "Oh, I really, I really hope I get that. I'm not sure that I will, but I really hope I do." The hope of your calling is a confident expectation of what is going to happen to you. The hope of your calling is your confidence in the fact that the one who calls is the one who enables and the one who fulfills. Your hope is not wishy-washy. It's not, "Oh, I'll write it down and really hope that God sees it and hears it and maybe does something about it." The hope that you have is a confident expectation of the promise of God being fulfilled in and through and to you. So can you imagine why Paul wants to write this? He's writing to new believers in a place called Ephesus, a place that was rampant with sorcery and idol worship, where the temple of Artemis, the temple of Diana was. And people from all around used to come to Ephesus to worship Diana. There was rampant prostitution and sin, immorality. There was this magic and witchcraft and idolatry. And Paul's writing to the people who used to be like that, who used to do that. And he's saying, "This is who you are. This is what God has done to you." Can you imagine now why he wants to write? That God wants to pray, that God would give them wisdom and knowledge, revelation in the knowledge of him and that their heart, their innermost being, would experience the truth, the hope of their calling. And what does he say? "The riches of the glory of his inheritance in the saints." And I think there's a lot of debate in this verse, you know. What does this mean? Is it Christ's inheritance or is it our inheritance? And I don't actually know which way I would go on this. I think that you and I are Christ's inheritance and it's glorious. The riches of, what is it he says? And you will know what are the riches of the glory of his inheritance in the saints. That means that we are the riches of the glory of Christ's inheritance. And I love that idea, that I might be part of Christ's inheritance. How wonderful is that? But even if it's the other way, it's still wonderful because that means my inheritance is glorious. Well, look at what he says. "When am I going to have this glory? And I'm going to be filled with the knowledge of God, who is glorious, in this life, in this human life, as I walk this planet, as I grow in understanding of his will and experience of his will, I'm going to begin to bear fruit. I'm going to begin to live for him and that will be glorious. And I'm going to receive a glorified body one day." We were just talking about that before we started. "One day, I'm going to have a new body and it's going to be glorious. And I'm going to spend eternity with him in glory." I've got present tense glory and future tense glory and eternal tense glory. That's my inheritance of glory. And I have Christ as my Savior, my Redeemer, my friend. And I am going to spend eternity with this Jesus. Glorious. And he prays, Paul prays, that we will know by experience the surpassing great power that is at work towards us who believe, God's power at work to us who believe. Well, who believes in this Zoom meeting? Who believes in the Lord Jesus? Well, I do and you do. And what Paul is writing here is that there is a surpassing greatness of power. is that there is a surpassing greatness of power towards you. There is a powerful work going on towards you, let alone in you and through you. There is a powerful work, surpassing great power, that is going on towards you. And how is God's work? How is God's power at work towards me? Well, he's going to go on to tell me. In chapter one, he's going to finish by telling me how God is going to do all of these things, has done all of these things. These are in accordance with the working of the strength of His might, God's might, which He brought about in Christ when He raised Him from the dead and seated Him at His right hand in the heavenly places, far above all rule and authority and power and dominion and every name that is named, not only in this age, but in the one to come. And He put all things in subjection under His feet and gave Him as head over all things to the church, which is His body, the fullness of Him who fills all in all. And you were dead in your trespasses and sins in which you formerly walked according to the course of this world, according to the prince of the power of the air, of the spirit that is now working in the sons of disobedience. Among them, we too, all formerly lived in the lusts of our flesh, indulging the desires of the flesh and of the mind, and were by nature children of wrath, even as the rest. But God, being rich in mercy because of His great love with which He loved us, even when we were dead in our transgressions, made us alive together with Christ. By grace you have been saved and raised us up with Him and seated us with Him in the heavenly places in Christ Jesus, so that in the ages to come, He might show the surpassing riches of His grace in kindness towards us in Christ Jesus. God's power is at work. And this is how His power has already affected us. When we were dead in our transgressions and sins, God made us alive together with Christ. By grace you have been saved and raised us up with Him and seated us with Him in the heavenly places in Christ Jesus. We are seated in heavenly places in Christ Jesus, you and I. Can you believe it? Can you even credit it? That you and I have been raised up spiritually with Christ Jesus and seated in heavenly places in Him? You and I spiritually live in the heavenly places in Christ Jesus. I mean, it is mind-boggling, even trying to understand it. But these are truths about yourself that God wants you to know. And He wants you to know this so that it impacts the way you live when you live here. Power did this. Power raised Jesus from the dead. And God's surpassing greatness of power raised you up to be with Him. And it is enabling me. What is this great power for? You know, I've said, ask the questions. Okay, so what is this power? And what is it for? And what has it done already? These questions, we've already answered. It's God's power. And He's raised me up to be with Christ spiritually. I am seated with Him in heavenly places. But why do I need to know this? What's the purpose of it? And when I look up, when I go a little bit further, I'm going to see what the purpose of this was. And what's the purpose of me knowing all of this? But first, you know, following the idea of, okay, looking up what words mean and what did it mean in the original tense? And where is it used before? I looked up surpassing great power because I wanted to know where else is this used? And actually, I found that Paul uses it again in 2 Corinthians. So if you've got a Bible, I hope you have, just turn to 2 Corinthians, chapter four. And I'm going to read verse seven to ten. 2 Corinthians, chapter four, verse seven to ten. But we have this treasure in earth and vessels so that the surpassing greatness of the power will be of God and not from ourselves. We are afflicted in every way, but not crushed; perplexed, but not despairing; persecuted, but not forsaken; struck down, but not destroyed; always carrying about in the body the dying of Jesus, so that the life of Jesus also may be manifested in our body. The power, the surpassing greatness of power that is at work towards us who believe is the power that we need to live a life that is not easy. It is the power that we need to live with joy and with peace, witnessing for the Lord Jesus through difficult trials and tests in difficult ways. It is the power of God, the enabling power of God, to enable us to live the life that we want to live, that we want to live, and that He wants us to live as witnesses for Christ Jesus here, whilst we're here on earth. So God's power is at work towards me. His power is at work towards you. His power is at work to everyone, towards everyone who believes. The power to change us, the power to transform us, the power to enable us to live the life that He wants us to live and that we find we want to live too. I looked up the power that transforms me because I've just said it here. And I followed the idea of the surpassing greatness of power. I kept looking up the words so that I could see more and more about this power and what would it do. And in 2 Corinthians three, just before this scripture that I've just read, Paul will say, 2 Corinthians three, but we all with unveiled face, beholding as in a mirror, the glory of the Lord are being transformed into the same image, from glory to glory, just as from the Lord, the Spirit. The surpassing greatness of power that is at work towards everyone who believes is the power that is transforming you from glory to glory, as to the Lord. And it is the power that will enable you to live with victory. Romans, chapter eight. Look at Romans, chapter eight, verse thirty-one to thirty-nine. What shall we say then to these things? If God is for us, who is against us? He who did not spare his own son, but delivered him over for us all, how will he not also with him freely give us all things? Who will bring a charge against God's elect? God is the one who justifies. Who is the one who condemns? Christ Jesus is he who died, yes, rather, who was raised, who is at the right hand of God, who also intercedes for us. Who will separate us from the love of Christ? Were tribulation, or distress, or persecution, or famine, or nakedness, or peril, or sword? Just as it is written, for your sake we are being put to death all day long; we were considered as sheep to be slaughtered. But in all these things we overwhelmingly conquer through Him who loved us. For I am convinced that neither death, nor life, nor angels, nor principalities, nor things present, nor things to come, nor powers, nor height, nor depth, nor any other creative thing will be able to separate us from the love of God, which is in Christ Jesus, our Lord. We, because of the surpassing greatness of the power of God that is at work towards us, you and I are able to live in victory, to live in safety and security, to live that way every day that we are here on this planet. You and I are able to live in that overwhelmingly conquering victory because of the surpassing greatness of power that is always at work towards you and I. I mean, it's so amazing, isn't it? I'm trying not to cry these days because I'm always crying on these videos. But I want to cry, honestly. I do. I want to cry at this. You know, I didn't even know about this surpassing greatness of power. Did you, when you believed? Did you have any idea at all that this was happening? Did you know that God was never going to stop being powerfully present with you, powerfully enabling you to live the way He wants you to live, the way you want to live? Did you even have a clue of that? No, you didn't. You didn't. God had to tell you. And in the telling, He knew that if you receive that for yourself, you will be enabled to live with a joy that no one would be able to understand in the midst of the circumstances that will do other people down, in the midst of circumstances that you're not strong enough humanly to cope with and to go through. His surpassing greatness of power will enable you to live with joy in those situations. I mean, it is truly amazing. And Paul prays. He prays that these believers will know all of this, know it by experience, that they will know it. And this is a prayer that God had Paul write down, that God had Paul pray. And he didn't just pray it for those Ephesian believers. He prayed it for you and I because you can be sure that this surpassing greatness of power is towards us who believe, everyone who believes. And God wants us to know this. And so he had Paul write down this prayer. So as you get to the end of chapter one, I mean, you could stay there forever, couldn't you? You could stay there forever and look at these words. But we went into chapter two and chapter three to look at what we could learn from those chapters. Again, this is all about what God has done, what God has done in these first three chapters. And I asked you to read through in the homework, to ask questions, to make lists about the words, to make lists about what you learned about God, about the Lord Jesus, about the church, anything and everything. Make lists about what you learned. And I hope you did. Because as you make the list, you become amazed at what you learn. And that's the amazement of it. It causes you to say to yourself, this is just incredibly wonderful. And you start to receive the truth. And then you'll start to be changed in the way that you live because of the truth. Because of the truth. So let's just read the next section of it. I've already read through to verse seven. So for the sake of time, I'll just go to verse ten. We are going to stop for the NHS. I know it's the last week this week. So we're going to stop for five to 10 minutes just before eight o'clock. So and I've got my phone here with the time on so that hopefully I won't miss it. So from verse seven, which I finished with just a moment ago, Ephesians, chapter two. For by grace you have been saved through faith, and that not of yourselves; it is the gift of God, not as a result of works, so that no one may boast; for we are His workmanship, created in Christ Jesus for good works, which God prepared beforehand, so that we would walk in them. Already in chapter two, if you have been marking words in chapter two, you will have seen the word "walk" or "walked" a couple of times. And Paul is leading us into what he's going to start to talk about in chapter four and onwards. So he's already talking about walk, how we walk. And when you look up the word "walk" in the New Testament, you will find that it means "live". So in verse one of chapter two, sorry, in verse two, and you were dead in your trespasses and sins in which you formerly walked according to the course of the power of this world. So in which you formerly lived, in which you formerly carried on. And then in verse ten, for we are His, God's, workmanship, created in Christ Jesus for good works, which God prepared beforehand, so that we would walk in them, live in them. And so what we're seeing here is that because Paul prayed at the end of chapter one, that they would know and they would have this knowledge, which would have its way, its work, in the way they lived. He wanted them to understand, as I say, the hope of their calling and the riches of his inheritance in the saints and his surpassing great power. He'd given them the truth of all that God had done so that, and he was now reminding them of the grace of God that had raised them up. Because he's going to tell them that they have been prepared. This is all going on because God has prepared works for them to do, created work in advance for them to do. It's kind of an odd thing, really, because he's really starting to kind of answer the prayer. Because he's praying that we would know, have this knowledge of wisdom and the revelation of God so that that would affect the way we live. And now he's talking about the way we live is affected because God has already prepared work in advance for us to do, good works. And so what he's saying is, all that I've said to you, all I've been telling you about who you are and what God has done and what He is continuing to do, that all has a bearing on the good work that He has created in advance for you to do. You and I cannot possibly work the works of God unless we know and are assured of the reality of what He has already done in us. The works that God has created for you to do are too big for you. They're too much for you. You can't do them unless you have received His Spirit and then trusted that He is at work. Surpassing great power is at work towards you, that He is at work within you, and that what He has called you to do, the works that He created in advance for you to do, He will give you the enabling power to actually fulfill. You know, many times, we don't do the work that God created in advance for us to do. We don't even really want to know it because all of the time, we're looking at ourselves and we're thinking, I can't do it. I'm not strong enough. I'm not intelligent enough. I'm not gifted enough. I can't do it. I can't do this work. It's too much for me. And so the way that Paul has written this letter, the way that God has given him to write this letter, is all to answer those doubts in you. No, you can't do this work, but I am at work towards you. I have already done this. I've already raised you up to be with Christ. I have already taken you out of Satan's domain. I have already given you eternal life. I have already blessed you and with every spiritual blessing in the heavenly places in Christ, I have seated you with Him, raised you up with Him and seated you with Him in the heavenly places in Christ Jesus. There is absolutely nothing that I call you to do that you are unable to do. I will enable you. My surpassing great power will enable you to do the work that I created in advance for you to do. And surely, a part of the work that God created in advance for us to do is to go and make disciples, is to build up the church, is to live to reveal the glory of God. Paul is reminding them of all of that. And I hope you made a list of all the things you learned about yourself as a believer. I mean, I really hope you've written a list of everything from chapter one, verse one, all the way down to where we are, chapter two, verse ten. All the things that are true about you as a believer in the Lord Jesus. And I hope, if you've never seen some of those before, that you stick them on your mirror or on your wall and you remind yourself of those every day. And some days, you're going to need to do that because life is hard and you're going to need to remind yourself that you're not the person you see in the mirror. You're not the person who fell and failed and sinned. You are not that person any longer. You are raised up and seated with Christ in heavenly places. You are a child of the living God. You have a future. You have an eternity. You have an inheritance. You have glory that awaits you. You were born again for glory. You were born again for glory. You live for glory and you are headed for glory. And I hope you remind yourself of these things, because the work that you've been left here to do, the work that God created in advance for you to do, is too big for you. So you have to be relying on the truth, believing the truth, relying on the truth of this surpassing greatness of power. I'm just going to read the next few verses before we stop. My clock says nineteen fifty-three, so I've got seven minutes, so I'll read a few more verses and then talk a little bit and then we'll stop. So Ephesians, chapter two, verse eleven to twelve. And by the way, if you didn't make a list, go back and make a list about what's true of believers in Christ Jesus. But Ephesians two, eleven and twelve. Therefore, so we have another therefore, remember that formerly you, the Gentiles in the flesh, who were called uncircumcision by the so-called circumcision, which is performed in the flesh by human hands, remember that you were at that time separate from Christ, excluded from the commonwealth of Israel, and strangers to the covenants of promise, having no hope and without God in the world. Paul's bringing them back to a fuller understanding of, of who they were before they believed in Jesus. And again, because I like to make lists, so I asked the question, okay, who were they before they believed? And what was true of them? And here I have it, they were separate from Christ. They were excluded from the commonwealth of Israel, the people of God. They were strangers to the covenants of promise. They had no knowledge of the promises of God to his people, Israel. And even if they did have knowledge, they couldn't come into it. They had no hope. They had no hope. They were without God in the world. I mean, this list of, of things that were true about them is pretty tragic. Because this is true about every person who does not believe in the Lord Jesus, particularly Gentiles, non-Jews. It is true of every Gentile in the world who does not believe in the Lord Jesus. Of course, they are separate from Christ. Of course, they are excluded from the people of God. They are strangers to God's promises through covenant. But the hardest hitting, they have no hope. They have no hope. And they are without God in the world. This is what was true of you before you believed in the Lord Jesus. You had no hope. You thought you did, but you didn't. You had no hope. And if we didn't know already, we know now that these Ephesian believers were Gentiles. Because we know, therefore, remember that formerly you, the Gentiles in the flesh, who are called the uncircumcision by the so-called circumcision. These are Gentile believers. And if you wanted to find out how these Gentile believers heard the gospel, how these people who had no hope, who were strangers to the covenant promises, who were excluded from the people of God, if you wanted to find out how they became who they now are in Christ Jesus, you'd have to look up other places in scripture where it talks about the Ephesians. And the easiest way to do that is, as I say, to use the Concordance and to look up the word Ephesus or Ephesians. And you will find the scripture references where that is used. And actually, you would go back to Acts, Acts, chapter eighteen and Acts, chapter nineteen. Paul stopped in Ephesus on his second missionary journey. He didn't do any teaching there. He just stopped there for a while. And you can find that out in Acts, chapter eighteen, verse eighteen to twenty-one. But then he went back. He went back to Ephesus in Acts, chapter nineteen, on his third missionary journey. So he'd been to Ephesus before and he hadn't really done anything there, preached. He was on his way somewhere else. Then on his third missionary journey, which was his longest journey, he went to Ephesus and he preached the gospel. And in chapter nineteen, you get a really, of Acts, you get a really good understanding of what Ephesus was like as a city. And on that note, we're going to stop. We're going to go and clap the NHS for the last time. And I will come back probably about five past eight, so that's about seven minutes from now. See you then. So Father, thank you that, thank you that you have provided all these ways that we can meet together in this time where we can't be physically together. Thank you, Lord, that that's starting to ease a little and that, and that from Monday, apparently, we can meet together with our families, six members of our families. It's, it's quite amazing. Well, six people all together, I think. I don't know what it is. But anyway, it's eased off, Lord, and we can meet together. And that's really wonderful for those of us who have missed seeing our children and grandchildren. It's really a great, great news. So I thank you, Lord, that you are slowly opening the door for us. Help us, Lord, not to rush through without thinking. Help us to really think about what we've learned of you in this time and what you would, what you have wanted us to know about you so that we can take it forward. Lord, help us to do what this letter encourages us to do. And that is to know the truth about you and have it change the way we live. And so, Father, I pray for the rest of this session that you would enable me not to go too fast, but to cover the material that we want to cover, Lord, so that we can say at the end of it that we have learned more about you and we are going to be changed by that knowledge. And I thank you, Lord, that that will happen. And I praise you in Jesus' name. Amen. So, you know, we've been talking through this whole thing. And I know that I'm doing a lot of teaching from the scripture itself, rather than just telling you how to, to study. But I hope I'm, I'm trying to do both. I'm hoping that you are understanding that the whole purpose of Bible study is, is really so that it changes the way you live. The, the purpose of Bible study is knowing God, knowing God and knowing Jesus in a way that changes the way you live, the way you view yourself and the way you view the world. Bible study will change your worldview. It will change your philosophies. It will change your ideas. It will tell you what real wisdom is, not the wisdom of the world, but the wisdom of God. It will show you the difference. It will enable you to live the way that God wants you to live. And when you live the way God wants you to live, you find there's such joy in it for you. There's such joy in it. You know, I was thinking a lot about it. I've been thinking a lot about it recently about what joy there is in, in knowing that you can trust your whole life to the Lord and that he will work his will out in your life if you but surrender to him. That's just been an amazing confirmation affirmation to me personally in these last few weeks. And I wouldn't change this time for the whole world, I have to say. So, yeah, so Acts, chapter nineteen, if you want to know how these Ephesian believers came to be believers, read Acts, chapter nineteen. See the sort of city they lived in, see what was happening. Understand about them. Put yourself in context. That's what context is. It's understanding who these people were and how they came to be where they are and, and how they had been and who they were now. And, and so it's not just being content to read the words on a page and understand the words that you're given. It's really diving into the text and trying to get as much out of it as you can by asking the who, what, where, when, why and how, looking for contrasts, looking for comparisons, looking up the words, cross-referencing where you see it, looking for purpose. You know, the words therefore and so then and so that and for this reason, all of those things, asking questions, looking for it, being a, an interrogator, a detective of the text, so that you can really know for yourself what it is that God is saying to you through Paul. So when you understand, when you read Acts, chapter nineteen, and we, we don't have the time because these sessions are too short and we're not going to go on for weeks and weeks. But if you read Acts, chapter nineteen, what you'll start to understand is why Paul wrote what he wrote, why God wrote to the Ephesians. I mean, just as a brief, a brief look at Acts, chapter nineteen, as I say, you find that they were in Ephesus where the big temple of Diana was, the temple of Artemis. Artemis and Diana are the same, same person, the same false god. You know, they were practicing witchcraft, magic, idol worship all over, prostitution, a lot of the work of Satan going on in that city. And then when you think about what does Paul tell them in the rest of this letter? What has he already told them? That they were dead, they did belong to Satan, but now they don't. That he's raised them up to, to be with Christ. And then how does he finish this letter? In Ephesians, chapter six, with therefore, be strong in the Lord and the strength of his might, put on the full armour of God, that you might be able to stand and to stand firm in the evil day. So Paul's writing this letter to these people and is including these specific things because of the people he's writing to. So he's going to use the word mystery. In chapter two and chapter three, he's going to expand on that mystery, because their mysteries were all hocus pocus magic in Ephesus. They were things that, you know, everything was a mystery. It was all kind of, you know, smoke and mirrors. But now Paul's going to tell them what is a real mystery and what has been revealed now. And he's going to, that's why he's using these words in this letter. Not that he doesn't use them in other places, but why is Ephesians six in Ephesians? Why is it that put on the full armour of God? Why is it in Ephesians? Because Ephesus was a city that was bombarded with idol worship and the work of Satan and the sorcery and the magic and the everything else. That's why they needed to know how to stand firm, how to put on the armour of God. So all of these things are important because they help us to understand what God is saying and when he's saying it. So carrying on then from what we've just seen in verse eleven and twelve of chapter two. But now, he says in verse thirteen, because he said to them, remember who you were. You were excluded from the covenants, from the covenant of promise. You were strangers. You were, you had no hope. You were without God. But now, in Christ Jesus, you who were formerly far off have been brought near by the blood of Christ. For he himself is our peace, who made both groups into one and broke down the barrier of the dividing wall, by abolishing in his flesh the enmity, which is the law of commandments contained in ordinances, so that in himself he might make the two into one new man, thus establishing peace, and might reconcile them both in one body to God through the cross, by it having put to death the enmity. And he came and preached peace to you who were far away and peace to those who were near. For through him we both have access, we both have our access in one spirit to the Father. Sorry, I'm just checking how far I'm going to go. So then you are no longer strangers and aliens, but you are fellow citizens with the saints and are of God's household. Having been built on the foundation of the apostles and the prophets, Christ Jesus himself being the cornerstone, in whom the whole building, being fitted together, is growing into a holy temple in the Lord, in whom you also are being built together into a dwelling of God in the Spirit. I mean, just quite amazing verses in here, packed, packed, packed with information. And so what I do when I'm reading through, because I mark my Bible, I number the facts that I'm told in a section. And so for me, I wrote, I have got eight different facts. It's either seven or eight because I've separated one into two. But, you know, eight different facts of what has happened because but now in Christ Jesus, but now in Christ Jesus, as opposed to then, remember, he says in verse eleven, therefore, remember that formerly, so as opposed to formerly, now, this is what is true about them. And Paul is really careful, God is really careful to answer every lacking, everything that was lacking in them before as Gentile unbelievers. Now he is, he's really careful to bring in the, the answer to those things because now they have believed. So look at what he says in Christ Jesus in these, in these verses. In Christ Jesus, they had been brought back, brought near by his blood. Do you see before, they were separate from Christ, excluded from the commonwealth of Israel. But now they have been brought near by the blood of Jesus. He is their peace. He is our peace, he, Paul says, for he himself is our peace, who made both groups into one and broke down the barrier of the dividing wall. So which groups have been made into one? Well, it's the, it's the group of Jew and the group of Gentile. They have now been made into one. And how has that been done? How has that been done? By, because Jesus broke down the barrier of the dividing wall. How did he do that? By abolishing in his flesh the enmity, which is the law of commandments contained in ordinances. So the enmity between Jew and Gentile was actually the law. That put them at enmity with each other. So by abolishing in his flesh the enmity, which is the law of commandments contained in the ordinances, so that in himself he might make the two into one new man, thus establishing peace. So we know that often in scripture, the word peace means peace with God, that, that God is talking about peace with him. But here, Paul is not talking about our peace with God. He's talking about the peace that God has brought about through Jesus of the peace between Jew and Gentile. And what he's saying is that has been brought about because Christ Jesus abolished in his flesh the enmity. He didn't abolish the law. He abolished the enmity of the law. Because what he has done is that he has made the two groups into one new man, thus establishing peace. So it's not that he, he, he did away with the law or he abolished the law. Otherwise, Jesus couldn't say in the gospels that not one jot or tittle of the law will be, will be wiped out until he comes. It's the enmity that the law put between the Gentiles and the Jews. The law was to keep them separate, to keep the Jews separate. That's why Paul said, you were excluded from the commonwealth of Israel. You were strangers to the covenants of promise. You had no hope. You were separate from Christ. Now you have been brought in. Those Gentile believers have been brought in. They have been wrecked. So that's, they've been made into one new man with the Jews who have believed and might reconcile them both in one body to God through the cross. So can you see now, the Jews have been reconciled to God through the cross and the Gentiles have been reconciled to God through the cross, having put to death the enmity, the enmity that the, that the law were made, that the law given to the, given to the Israelites made an enmity. It was a barrier. It was a dividing wall between them and the rest of the world, the Gentiles. So that has been put to death, that enmity. So they've been brought nearby his blood. They, he is at their peace. They are reconciled to God and they have access in one spirit to the Father. Look at what he says. For through him we both, Jew and Gentile, have our access in one spirit to the Father. Now, you know, if this is all a little bit arduous for you and if it's a little bit, you know, I, I don't know. I don't know if I really need to this. You do need to know this. You need to know this. Because this is one of the fundamental things in our faith, that we are now no longer Jew or Gentile, slave or free, male or female. We are all one in Christ Jesus. It is really fundamental that we understand this. And on this hinge the verses that I think we've looked at a couple of times, Second Corinthians fifteen, verse sixteen to twenty-one. From now on, we recognize no one according to the flesh, Paul says to the Corinthians. Why not? Because we are all new in Christ Jesus. We are all new creations, verse seventeen of Second Corinthians five. And this is the, the slightly complicated explanation of it, that Jesus in his flesh, in his death, in his blood, shed blood, he put to death the enmity that the law had brought about and made the two into one new man, thus establishing peace, reconciling them both in one body to God through the cross. And he came and preached peace to you who were far away and peace to those who were near. For through him we both have our access in one spirit to the Father. So then you are no longer strangers and aliens. Who is the you there? Who is the you? It's the Gentile Ephesian believers. So then you are no longer strangers. In verse eleven, he said, remember, you used to be strangers. But now you are no longer strangers and aliens, but you are fellow citizens with the saints. Well, who are the saints? I thought we were saints. I thought he wrote to the saints in Ephesus. Didn't he? Didn't he write to the saints in Ephesus? Ephesians, chapter one, verse, verse one, to the saints who are Ephesus and who are faithful in Christ Jesus. And, and that's true. If you look up the word saint, it will mean a separated one, a holy one. But here, in the context of this description, you know that Paul is calling the saints the Jewish believers, because he's saying, so then you are no longer strangers. You are no longer strangers, but you are fellow citizens with the saints. So what he's saying is, remember in chapter one, he said, we who were the first to believe in Christ. What is it in verse, verse three? In him, no, sorry, verse twelve. To the end that we who were the first to hope in Christ would be to the praise of his glory. In him you also, after listening to the message of truth, the gospel of your salvation, having also believed, you were sealed in him with the Holy Spirit of promise. So Paul has made a separation and he's, he's, he made it in chapter one. And now he's, he's making it again in chapter two, because what he wants to tell them is that you who used to have no hope, you who were strangers to the covenants of promise, the covenants that God made with Abraham, Isaac and Jacob, the covenant promises that he the covenant promises that he made with his people, Israel, the covenants that, that ensure that they have a future and that they have a hope. You and I as Gentile believers, those Ephesians, had no part of those things. But now in Christ, because of his shed blood, we who were far away have been brought in. You and I have hope now. We have access to the Father in one spirit. So there is one spirit, one Lord, one Father. And you and I, Gentile and Jewish believers, we have access through the same spirit to the Father. So then you are no longer strangers and aliens, but you are fellow citizens with the saints, and are of God's household, having been built on the foundation of the apostles and the prophets, Christ Jesus himself being the cornerstone, in whom the whole building, being fitted together, is growing into a holy temple in the Lord, in whom you also are being built together into a dwelling of God in the Spirit. We have access by one spirit to the Father. We are no longer strangers and aliens, the Ephesians and us. So we are fellow citizens with the saints, the Jews who were previously the only ones called the holy ones. We are of God's household, and we are being built into a dwelling of God in the Spirit. I mean, if you don't understand where you were, you have no understanding of how amazing it is that you are where you are now. If you don't understand the fact that because you were not a Jew, and because you had no knowledge of God, you were, you had no hope. You were separate from Christ, you were separated from God, you could never get into the, into the family of God. Because unless you understand the fullness of that truth, you will not be able to sing, amazing grace, how sweet the sound that saved a wretch like me. You had no hope. That's the, that's the key of that passage, you had no hope. You didn't even know who God was. You thought you did, but you didn't. You had no hope. You were excluded from the commonwealth of Israel, strangers to the covenant promises. But now, in Christ Jesus, God has done it all. He has caused you to be born again. He gave you life, and we had no hope but God. He raised us up with Christ. Unless you're thinking now, well, that's not fair. You know, the, the Jews had all of this, and, and we didn't have it, that's not fair. God can't be fair. Remember that the Jew has to come through Christ too, to be a part of this one new man. That if, there is no salvation under heaven by any other name but by Jesus. Every single believer has come through Jesus Christ. Yes, God has still got a plan for his people, Israel. Yes, he will never break his promises. Yes, the church has not replaced Israel. But the only way to God for eternity is through believing in the one who is the way, the truth and the life. And here, all that Paul is doing is explaining to those Ephesians believers that they had no hope, but now they do. Where is Christ now? He is seated in the heavenly places. Where are we? We are raised up to be with him. Um, this is the truth, a wonderful truth about who we are as believers. And, and really pick apart those verses in, in chapter two, the end of chapter two, because they're important. Pick them apart and see, you are part of a building that is being fitted together as a wholly fitting temple to the Lord. That's what you are, you are a part of the temple of God. And, um, and Paul is gonna pray for them in chapter three again. He's gonna pray for them, because he wants them to understand, look, look at what he says in chapter three, verse one. For this reason. For what reason? Because they were, they used to be excluded, but now they're not. Because now they're one new man, because they are now fellow citizens with the saints, because they are being built into a temple of the Lord. Because for that reason, I, Paul, the prisoner of Christ Jesus, for the sake of you Gentiles. And, and chapter threes are really interesting. If you, did you read chapter three? Did you mark it? Did you ask questions? I hope you did, because what you'll see when you read that is that Paul began to pray for them in verse one. And he didn't continue his prayer till verse fourteen. And in between, he took a little kind of side, side alley, a side trail. And he talked to them a bit about the mystery of Christ. He wanted to pray for them, for this reason, I, Paul, the prisoner of Christ Jesus, for the sake of you Gentiles. And if you went to verse fourteen, you could see, it follows directly on, for this reason I bow my knees uh, before the Father. But in those intervening verses, he tells them something about the mystery that he calls the mystery of Christ. And, uh, we're gonna take a little look at it, and, and if you didn't make a list of this mystery, um, I would urge you to go back and make a list of what you learn about this mystery. Um, uh, um, why does he do this? Why does he explain this mystery here? What's the purpose of doing it here? Why does he break his prayer off to explain this mystery? Well, because what he's just said in chapter two is difficult to understand. It's difficult, you know, it's not a straightforward reading. And so he wants to be, wants to explain to them that this is a mystery. And a mystery, the word mystery in this New Testament, in the New Testament, means a secret that is divinely revealed. It's something that you couldn't know unless God told you. So a mystery here is something that God has revealed. And as we read through it, you're gonna see how that has come about and what that means. Uh, look at Ephesians two to verse thirteen. If indeed you have heard of the stewardship of God's grace, which was given to me for you, that by revelation there was made known to me the mystery, as I wrote before in brief. By referring to this, when you read, you can understand my insight into the mystery of Christ, which in other generations was not made known to the sons of men, as it has now been revealed to his holy apostles and prophets in the Spirit. To be specific, that the Gentiles are fellow heirs and fellow members of the body and fellow partakers of the promise in Christ Jesus through the gospel, of which I was made a minister, according to the gift of God's grace which was given to me, according to the working of his power. To me, the very least of all saints, this grace was given, to preach to the Gentiles the unfathomable riches of Christ, and to bring to light what is the administration of the mystery, which for ages has been hidden in God, who created all things, so that the manifold wisdom of God might now be made known through the church to the rulers and authorities in the heavenly places. This was in accordance with the eternal purpose which he carried out in Christ Jesus our Lord, in whom we have boldness and confident access through faith in him. Packed, packed, packed verses. Um, and, you know, because this is not really so that we study the letter to the Ephesians exactly, but so we learn how to make the lists, I'm gonna go through them relatively quickly. Um, why does Paul write, break his prayer here? Why does he write this? Because he wants them to understand the mystery of the church. The mystery, uh, which he calls the mystery of Christ. Um, the covenants that he talked about in chapter two, the covenants of promise, they were made with Israel for Israel. And he says that, um, that they, the Gentiles were excluded from them. Uh, even Abraham believed the gospel, Galatians three tells us, but didn't know it. So, um, that, this was a mystery that wasn't revealed until now, Paul says. It has been revealed to the apostles, um, and, uh, to the, uh, uh, to his holy apostles and prophets in the Spirit. So this is a mystery, this is a divine secret that has only just been revealed, and it has been revealed to the apostles of Jesus Christ and to his prophets in the Spirit. So what is the mystery? Verse four to six, uh, it's the mystery of Christ. Um, to be specific, verse six, that the Gentiles are fellow heirs and fellow members of the body. What body? The body of Christ. And fellow partakers in the promise in Christ Jesus, it, it, fellow partakers of the promise in Christ Jesus through the gospel. So, um, uh, what is the mystery? It's the church. And the Gentiles are fellow members of it, not just the Jews. This is the Gentile, so the gospel came to the Jews first, remember. Jesus came to his own, and his own did not receive him. So, but as many as did receive him, John says, John chapter one, to those, then he gave the right to become children of God. So the gospel came to the Jews, Jesus came to the Jews. He came to his people, Israel, but very, very few of them received him. And so the gospel went out. But in, in case you're thinking that God, it was just an afterthought that you and I came into the family of God. God wants to be very clear, that, make it very clear to you and to me, to understand that this has always been his purpose. This is an eternal purpose. Verse eleven, this was in accordance with the eternal purpose which he carried out in Christ Jesus our Lord. So lest, as you've read through chapter two and into this description of how the Gentiles were excluded, lest you've started to think, well, that's not fair, well, how could anyone have ever been saved? That the answer to that is that this is a mystery. It wasn't revealed to people, now it's revealed. But it was an eternal plan, an eternal purpose. It has always been in the purpose and plan of God that people would come to him through Christ Jesus, the Son of God. Um, it's a mystery, and he wants to explain his role in it. Chapter, verse seventy goes on, of which I was made a minister. He is a minister of this mystery. And the mystery is the church, it's the, it's the way into the church, the gospel of the grace of God, which enables everyone who believes to become a member of the church. And, um, you know, I made a list of the mis- things I could learn about the mystery. And I made, uh, there were seven of them, and that doesn't include bits about Paul. And I'm just gonna read it from the top, but I honestly would urge you to write a list about the mystery, so that you, uh, can, um, to can know what it is. The mystery of Christ is revealed in the gospel. That was my heading. Number one, it was not made known to the sons of men, i.e. humans. It is now revealed by his Holy Spirit and his prophets in the Spirit, verse five. Specifically, the specific message of this mystery is that the Gentiles are heirs and fellow members of the body of Christ and fellow partakers of the promise in Christ Jesus through the gospel, verse six. Paul is a minister of the gospel by way of or according to God's gift of grace. That's verse seven. And then we have a bit of description about Paul's, about himself, that he's preaching this, this mystery. And then verse five, the mystery has been hidden for ages in God, verse nine. So that, so that the reason that it was hidden for ages in God is so that the manifold wisdom of God might now be made known through the church to the rulers and authorities in the heavenly places, both good and evil. He doesn't say both good and versi- and, and, uh, evil. But you know that he, the only other spiritual authorities that he's talked about is in chapter two, verse one. You were formerly walked according to the course of this world, according to the prince of the power of the air, and the spirit that is now working in the sons of disobedience. So can you see the enormity of what God's saying? It seems to me that the rulers and authorities, the spiritual rulers and authorities, who thought that they had had success because people were not being able to come to God, were not even the Israelites, even God's cho- um, chosen people, even the people to whom he gave his covenant promises and his law, and everything, and the knowledge of himself, even they weren't living the way that he wanted them to live. Can you understand what God is saying? That the manifold wisdom, his manifold wisdom is now being made known through the church, which is Jew and Gentile in one body. That there is a wisdom of God that is foolishness to men, that is foolishness to the angels and the demons of Satan, that is foolishness to anyone but God, to anyone who, but those who have the spirit of God. But now this mystery is revealed. And in the revelation of this mystery, God's wisdom is proclaimed. He's proclaimed in the heavenly places. Amazing, 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 amazing that it's proclaimed. And now, after telling them all of that, Paul will pick up the prayer that he wanted to pray for them, or he began to pray in verse one. For this reason, verse fourteen, I bow my knees before the Father, from whom every family in heaven and on earth derives its name, that he would grant you, according to the riches of his glory, to be strengthened with power through his Spirit in the inner man, so that Christ may dwell in your hearts through faith, and that you, being rooted and grounded in love, may be able to comprehend with all the saints what is the breadth and length and height and depth, and to know the love of Christ which surpasses knowledge, that you may be filled up to all the fullness of God. Now to him who is able to do far more abundantly beyond anything or beyond all that we ask or think, according to the power that works within us, to him be the glory in the church and in Christ Jesus to all generations forever and ever. Amen. Two prayers in the first three chapters of Ephesians. Chapter one's prayer, that they would be filled with the knowledge and revelation of God, so that they would understand in their innermost being the hope of their calling, the riches of the inheritance, uh, of Christ in the saints, and the surpassing greatness of power that is at work towards them. And did you see here in verse sixteen, that he would grant you, according to the riches of his glory, to be strengthened with power through his Spirit in the inner man? And then in verse twenty, now to him who is able to do far more abundantly beyond all that we ask or think, according to the power that works within us. So now this surpassing greatness of power that was, was at work towards us, and the power, uh, that is going to strengthen us through his Spirit in the inner man, and this power that is now at work within us, this surpassing greatness of power towards, within and through us by his Spirit. Amazing, isn't it? It's just, I'll keep using that word amazing, I'm using it too often. Things become less amazing if you keep saying everything's amazing. But this is amazing, isn't it? It's just absolutely incredible, um, that this could be true, that, that, you know, this mystery that is now revealed, that you and I, because we live this side of the cross, we can come into an understanding of this mystery, that it has always been, from before the world began, and it will be to the end of time, that God would bring about a body, one body, in, uh, uh, an entity that would be one new man, Jew and Gentile in one body. Jew and Gentile in one body, in the body of Christ Jesus for eternity. Paul prayed that they would be strengthened in the inner man with this power. He prayed that Christ would dwell in their hearts through faith. And, you know, you're thinking, well, I thought Christ was already there by his Spirit through faith. But he's talking about really settling down, that word dwell means to settle down, to, to kind of make himself at home. So what Paul is praying is that you will grasp the enormity of what God has done and what he is doing, and that, and Christ will settle down in your heart, and you'll talk to him, you'll know he's there, and, and you'll be talking to him all the time, and you'll be considering him and thinking about him, and thinking about this life that he's brought you into. You'll be strengthened with power in your inner man, that Christ will settle down and dwell with you, and it will be so wonderful, your fellowship will be so close, and you will be rooted and grounded in love, in this amazing love of God that has put you into Christ Jesus, that you will be able to comprehend, comprehend. And that word doesn't mean understand, it means lay hold of. It should actually be translated, or might be translated, I don't want to say should, apprehend, so that you can apprehend it, that you can lay hold of this, um, comprehend this, um, with all the saints, what is the breadth and the length and the height and the depth, and to know this love of Christ. Remember the word know, experience, and to experience the love of Christ which surpasses knowledge, that you may be filled up to all the fullness of God. And the word fullness or filled up here means being full and being complete, that you might be completed to all the fullness of God. And how will it all be done? How will all of this be done? How will Paul's prayer be answered? How will everything that is, is promised to us in scripture be done by the power of the Spirit who works within us? And then lest they don't still quite understand. Now to him who is able to do far more abundantly beyond all that we ask or think. How? According to the power that works within us. To him be the glory in the church, in the one new man, and in Christ Jesus to all generations forever and ever. Amen. I mean, it's just an incredible prayer. And it comes at the end of some incredible information. A divine, a mystery, a secret that is divinely revealed, that you and I are now party to understanding. This miracle of God bringing Jew and Gentile into one body, where there is no male or female, where there is no slave or free, where there is no Jew or Gentile, where we are all new creations in Christ Jesus, where we are all being fitted together into a holy temple in the Lord by his Spirit. Father, I thank you for your word. I thank you for Ephesians. I love this letter, Lord, you know that. I love this letter. I love what it tells me about you, and I love what it tells me about myself. I pray, Father, that I would still go on and read it again and again, and make more lists and find out more information, and that I would lay hold, that I would lay hold of this, oh God, that I would lay hold of it. That I would know the length and the breadth and the height and the depth of it all, oh God. That I would understand your love for me in Christ Jesus. That I would understand that you have a work for me, that you created in advance for me to do. And that I would understand that your surpassing greatness of power is at work towards me and in me and through me. And that what you call me to do, you will definitely, without question, enable me to do. Oh, Father. You know, that fills me with joy, Lord. And I praise you and I thank you for all that you have done and all that you will do. In Jesus' name. Amen.